Good morning. It's 9:30, so we will start the meeting. The mayor is not here right now. He is running a little behind, so I am filling in for him until he gets here. So we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Okay, I guess we need, the first item is we need to, do we need to do the pledge of allegiance?
Probably.
Okay. Let's do the pledge. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
If my knees will allow me to get up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the roll. Now, do I do that? Go ahead and do that?
Yeah, you can do that.
I think you can still do that.
Okay. Councilmember Dumas?
Here.
Councilmember Elwood?
Here.
Councilmember Graves?
Here.
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Pittman?
Here.
Everybody is here. Okay, so we'll get started. I guess, I think the stated purpose of this workshop today is to throw out ideas, receive ideas, and set a priority on the ordinances that are needed. So, I guess Dan is here. Does someone have thoughts to get this started?
He sent out a big thing from Lynn. I would think Lynn.
Yeah. I, um...
You talked about the draft that he put together, the first three titles?
The spreadsheet.
The spreadsheet. And Dan did all that work, but I can, we can look at that. Do you have that available on your desktops, guys?
I do.
Yeah, I should have.
The spreadsheet with all the bright colors on it?
Yeah. I'm not, you know, he, uh, he put that together so that you can see where the codes, where's my document? Where the covenants that exist line up with some of our titles that we have to address in our own ordinances and title. And I think his intention was to probably start with the first three that aren't listed in this grouping because they have to do with the organization of our government here. But there are some that are consistent with the covenants, like the brown section where he said about the zoning. We'll get to that later with planning and zoning, but those, there's a lot of things that are in the covenants that are things that we can put into our ordinances. There aren't restrictions on doing that. I guess, starting at the top of the list, most of them are in the zoning, but there's the animals permits and other animals. Those are animal control. Might be something we would consider. The, uh, the health and sanitation pieces, the ones that are in bright yellow in our spreadsheet, about nuisances and noxious activities, as well as regulations that might be put in place about storage and the no motorized vehicles park, parking areas. There was a couple of them that I just, I didn't look at Dan's sheet comparing to my notes, but there's things about abandoned vehicles in a couple of the covenants that we might want to put in there so that maybe we'd have an ordinance on that at some point, just to make sure they aren't an attractive nuisance for whoever might be interested in that, you know, kids or what have you. Do you guys have any other thoughts when you're looking at that spreadsheet?
All right. You know, I, I, I think we can go ahead with the, with those three sections that he outlined there without any, developing a municipal code. I think that was what he's trying to do, was get started on developing a municipal code. Um, one of the things he talked about was, in doing that now, is that, you know, we're currently called a town, and then we, if we go to a city, do we have to go back and change all the ordinances to say city instead of town? Um, but one of the things I was thinking about that we, I think we could do while we're waiting for funds is look into changing the name, you know, the name from town to city. I don't, I don't think there's any restriction on, I think we can get by the census problem. Uh, I'd, I'd like to look at, for us to look at the statute on, you know, going from a town to a city. I think it's something we can do now.
I think they have to have the census numbers, though, for them to agree to it.
Well, how, how real hard would it be to put the enacted code as a town and then just systematically go back through and change one word to city later on?
We just gotta do it.
He, he mentioned, I think, as part of the discussion last meeting, that we could, any that we pass as a town, we could have a, the last line saying, I don't know how you'd word it, but...
I know, can we do that, though?
Well, he seemed to sugge, Dan seemed to suggest we could, because he said we could just put a clause at the end that this transitions to the city when that, when that happens.
Well, we only need 500, over 500 people, and I don't think there's, you know, I can't see how they could hold that up. I mean, we've...
No, but I just don't know the order of things, I guess.
Well, I, you know, I, I'll go with...
If we have to wait for the census, we don't need to, we don't want to wait till we get the census.
We are not going to get the census dated until 2022.
They done, they already told us it's going to be...
Well, then...
February, and we can't wait that long to, if we're going to have to do, you know, just break it into wards and everything, we're going to have to have something else.
I, I kinda, I'm with you, Pat. I kinda think we ought to do it as a town and then worry about changing the words later.
Yeah, well, I don't think that's very difficult, because we could go through, how many could we go through in one meeting to say, you know, I propose that we change this to, from town to city, or if it's permissible, or any successful, successive city if that's permitted.
I see. I, uh, I, I'm going to drag out the, the statute on that and see what, what, what the requirements are.
Okay.
And if everybody's in agreement with it, you know, and my RFQ thing is done, I'd...
I have one other just brief mention, and I may be completely off base, but one of my neighbors mentioned it. Is it going to be at all confusing that we start passing city code and then everybody here, in theory, is already subject to covenants, which are a little different from each section? I mean, should we try to make those consistent at all if we can?
Absolutely.
Because that, because that's, you know, people are going to move here, and I know when I moved here, my realtor showed me the covenants so I could review them, and then now if you're going to move here, here's the covenants, here's the city code. I would like them to be, adopt as many of these into this as we possibly could.
Well, I think you're really on difficult ground if you try to put something in that's different from the covenants, that disagrees with a covenant.
That's kinda what I'm getting at, yeah. I don't want the confusion to...
I don't think, I don't think we want to go there.
I don't want somebody to show up at a town hall meeting and another year and say...
Because those covenants are, are good forever.
You know, the only...
Yeah, yeah, we're not, not advocating to change the covenants.
No, what I'm, I'm saying, can we make them as similar as possible?
They will be.
And the mayor's here, so we can stop talking.
Yes, let me start out by apologizing for being late. I was on the telephone with the lawyers at the municipal league working on our issue of not having...
Money?
Turnback funds. So, they're working on it. There isn't any ready-made solution to the problem yet, but they understand the problem. They understand that everybody is sympathetic to the problem. They're just not exactly sure how to proceed yet, so they're going to get back with me later today. So, can you bring me up to speed on what you were discussing relative to covenants?
We just did a quick review of the spreadsheet that you did, a comparison of covenant issues or items and how they relate to our titles. Didn't come to any conclusions, but noted that most of them are the ones that are common to zoning that we're going to have to do down the road. We're just talking about a desire that as we move forward, that our ordinances would reflect what the covenant language has so we don't have any conflicts as best we can.
Yeah.
That's all we got accomplished.
Dan, I raised an issue, like, I'd like to look at the statutes and see if we can't proceed with changing from a town to a city without, you know, the 2022 census.
Um, we would have to look at the statute.
That's all I do.
Because if it says anything about census in it, I can tell you the answer's going to be no.
Okay.
Because that's what we're hung up on with the turnback funds. Is that anywhere where it says census, the assumption is that that means that the only number that means anything is the one that comes from the Census Bureau, and unfortunately, the Census Bureau is not providing any, any information at this point, so...
The other thing that was mentioned was, was, Pat made the point about, could we go ahead with a code of ordinances that said town, and then how much trouble really is it to change town to city in a future version, amend them all?
Um, any page that has a change to it, they charge, I think it's $10 a page or something like that, to make the changes.
Let me ask this question, then. Um, do you have to get it published in order to have it enforced?
No.
Then we don't publish it.
I don't think that Cherokee Village ever codified their ordinances. I can't see any evidence of it.
So, I would say you don't codify the words, the ones that have the town word, and you wait till you get the city designation and change it to city, and then you codify it, as long as we could still enforce it.
Yeah.
Yesterday, I was trying to clean out some of my files, and I ran across the big folder on incorporation, and it's all stuff that I had from the 2002, 2003 effort. And in that, I found, uh, one from the pros and cons concerning the possible incorporation of Bela Vista, and the incorporation committee in Bela Vista contracted with the University of Kansas to look that over. And in this document, there's all kinds of reference about codes and covenants and... So, and it's the only copy I got.
Are you wanting to admit that into evidence?
For your perusal. Uh, but there's a lot of, a lot of good information in there on, and a lot of it is not really relevant because it's, you know, talking about statutes and, you know, requirements and all that, which we're, we're beyond, but it also has, has a lot of back and forth on issues that we're dealing with.
Yeah.
So, I think there's, and it mentions Cherokee Village, um, Maumell, and Fairfield Bay in there, so, you know, we have three, at least three good references that we can go to, to see how those entities solve these problems that we're trying to, and I think we need to make sure that we, you know, look at them, because they're solving the same problems that we're, they've already solved, or hopefully solved, the problems that we're, we're trying to get by.
Well, I'm, I am, I've, I've always considered, ever since we started thinking about incorporation, I've always looked at Fairfield Bay to kind of be, you know, what we want to be when we grow up.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know...
That's the only difference.
Talked to their mayor several times, and, and I've been basically using the Fairfield Bay Municipal Code as a guide.
Yeah.
And, um...
Well, you know, they, they were a POA, but they're very similar.
Yeah, but there's, there's a lot of similarities between, you know, like in Cherokee Village, the city took over everything except the amenities, whereas in Fairfield Bay, the, you know, the POA still runs, you know, you know, several of the, of the services, so I think they're more similar to what we are, even though they were a POA.
Well, I've, I've just never, never been able to figure out what Bela Vista's, what they did. Their website, I cannot, I can't navigate.
Yeah. The, um, I, I guess the way I'm, the way I'm kind of looking at this ordinance is, is the, you know, there's no, in, in my opinion, there's no need to rush into anything. Um, you know, first of all, we don't have any money to enforce anything yet, and until we do, you know, we, you know, one of the things in one of the documents that I read, you know, said that before you pass an ordinance, you should consider whether or not you have the wherewithal to enforce it. And, um, so we don't want to jump in there and start, you know, writing a bunch of ordinances about, you know, trash removal and maintenance of property and building codes and stuff like that, when we don't have any more resources to enforce it right now than the current planning commission. The, the second thought I had was that, um, we're not required by law to even have a planning commission. It's something that we can do if we want to, and I think eventually we do want to, but we're certainly not, you know, under any pressure, you know, from a statutory requirement to having a planning commission. Um, so, um, we have, we got a lot of things to work out between us and the, and the current planning commission yet before we, before we can take the next step, I think.
But isn't, isn't ultimately the planning commission for a city supposed to sort of control potential new development by having a plan in place?
A land use plan and stuff like that, yes.
Yeah. And are, the planning commission that exists today is just there to enforce the covenants of what's been platted and covenanted.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's a difference between a city planning commission, essentially, than the planning commission for the district.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's differences in, you know, Lynn is far more the expert on this, so, he's the one that's been studying it, but from, from what I see, there's city, there's things that the city can do, um, that the planning commission can't.
Right.
But by the same token, there's a lot of things that the planning commission can do that we, that the city can't.
That's right.
You know, the, the city can't, as far as I can see, the city cannot dictate, um, whether or not a house in a particular block has to have a minimum of 1,500 square feet. You can't, the, the city has no authority to, to, um, put architectural restrictions on, on construction and things like that. Lynn, if I'm saying something wrong...
Really? I probably do.
Let me know.
I mean, I don't think you want to go against the covenants, but I think the city can.
In one statute, I agree, in another, it's, especially when I look at other communities around us that have ordinances that say it has to be so many square feet. What it, what we can't do is say the house has to have so much brick facing on it, that the fences have to be wooden, or they have to be steel, or the roofs have to all be black. You know, we can't do that kind of thing in a city ordinance. But we can restrict on residential areas how large the lots have to be.
I think...
We can restrict the frontages, the size of the yards, and those kinds of things.
Well, are we, are we going to be able to pass eventually those kinds of ordinances on square footage and, and type of construction and differentiate between Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 3? We don't have the same...
I don't think we can, from what I've read.
Because we've got a problem if you've gone that direction.
Dan?
I was looking at Huntsville...
Even though they'd all be grandfathered in, that's, that, you know, it's still, I don't know that we want a blanket for the whole city-town.
No, you...
I was looking at Huntsville last night, and Huntsville has, I mean, hun, over 100 pages of ordinances dealing with subdivisions and down to subdivisions.
Other towns have resident 1, resident 2, commercial 1, I mean...
We can do that.
The only, and maybe not by war, but then by section, we could actually say, you know, a mobile home is okay here, a log cabin is okay here.
Not without, not without being in conflict with the covenants.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Our only restriction is...
But the covenants don't prohibit that in some parts of Holiday Island now. Do they?
Yeah.
One, Unit 1.
There's only, Unit 1 is the only covenant that allows, right now, that allows for mobile homes.
But, you know, we, we do have an issue, I think we have an issue right now, in the time is selling off these parcels that have no covenants applicable to them, and they're doing basically whatever time and the develop, and the builder want to do.
That's, that was sort of what I was getting at, that the city...
And so you say there's, you know, I think there is a, a need for us to move, move on this. If, if, I know there's restrictions, but if we, if we've got some room and we can move on it, we need to move.
Yeah.
And it is also one of the primary things that we talked about in our, um, campaign for incorporation, so I, I don't think we, and it, I mean, doing the pre-planning and getting, uh, working with the current planning commission, we can do that without funds. I, yeah, we can't get down to where we're actually passing an ordinance to possibly impose fines, et cetera, and inspections, but we can do a lot of the legwork.
I, I don't know how, I don't know how much too late it is to be worried about that, because, um, most of the, most of the, um, unplotted parcels, I think, are already sold and...
I don't know. I got, I got a, I got a seven acre parcel setting up next to me that...
If the, if the parcel is within a unit...
They are not.
Uh, the parcels up on top of Rocky Top are, are in the unit, and as far as I can see, and if there's nothing in the covenant that excludes the parcel from the, from the, the restrictions in the covenant for that unit, then whatever the developer does with that would have to meet that covenant.
But I guess the problem is that the current planning commission is not under the city.
Right.
So...
And...
The city, the town council has no control.
Right. I, I'm not saying that it, I'm not saying that it can't be, that it, that it shouldn't be done long-term. I'm saying that there's so many things that we don't know yet, that it would be very risky for us to jump in and start writing ordinances, just in order to just try to prevent some particular thing from happening.
Well, it's already happened.
I, I wouldn't do it without having a lawyer look at it and...
Oh, I wouldn't either.
And understand how that, how that might impact, um, the declarant's rights and the, you know, and...
We know, we've got three communities that have gone through this already, and all of them have been operational for quite, quite a while, so they should be information that we could use in, in guiding us in getting, getting somewhere.
I agree.
Of course, there is protection in the fact that, in order for them to change the current covenants of where those parcels are located, they would have to get a majority of the property owners to go along with it.
Right.
And have a vote.
Yeah.
Now, I think there are, there are covenants that have parcels identified in the covenant that they're excluded from, from that covenant.
Most of them are.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Like in Unit 1, it says, uh, Parcell A through F are unrestricted, controlled by the declarant. Same thing in, uh, Unit 3, A through L, Unit 4, on through the list. One note in Unit 2, it says A through K are controlled by HISA.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Yeah, there's a lot of...
There are others that, as Dan said, there is no exclusions mentioned for parcels in the units. So, I don't know, if, how that's interpreted to law in a case, if you went to court and say, well, it doesn't say that that parcel's excluded, so it must be included.
I don't know. Uh, I know there are some people unhappy with, uh, what's going on, but, uh...
Yeah, but I, I'm not sure the city would be able to, even if, even if we had the planning and zoning ordinances, I'm not sure the city would be able to stop that.
Well, I just think, you know, I, I think, I think we, I think we need to keep moving on it. You, you know, we may not get to the point where we can actually write an ordinance, but we can get, you know, a lot of issues resolved.
Lynn and, and I are working on, you know, meeting up with the planning commission and trying to figure out, you know, where, where to go from here.
So, what is your thought, Dan, on, on how we proceed doing ordinances, or not doing ordinances?
I, I was, well, there, there's some ordinances that we have to pass, um, just because they're, um, we used, we used resolutions to do certain things so far because we weren't in a position to start writing ordinances. But a lot of those things, um, should be, um, enshrined in an ordinance.
So, are you talking 1, 2, and 3? The title 1, 2, 3?
Yeah, mostly, yeah, the things like, like, um, you know, how we do purchasing, you know, the, the, I think Section 3 is fiscal, um, responsibilities and administration, you know, how we hold our meetings and stuff like that. Eventually, we will have to have a, an ordinance, well, yes, eventually we'll have to have an ordinance identifying that we're a city of the second class and, and things like that. Um, there are some things that don't fall under planning and zoning that people are concerned about that I think we can probably start taking a look at passing ordinances on. Um, you know, one of the main concerns for people is, um, you know, is rundown property, you know, people not, not maintaining their property, trash in the yards and stuff like that. That doesn't fall under planning and zoning. That falls under health and sanitation and public safety and, and stuff like that, so...
But I thought you said we'd have to have code enforcement in place, which requires money or something?
Yes, well, that's...
We could prepare those things...
Yeah, we could.
And, and have them ready to go. I mean, I, the neighbors I've talked to, that's, other than building codes, that's their main concern, dogs, garbage, and, and grass, which I don't think, you said, those are non-building code type of things.
Yeah.
And, and, but the thing, go back to a subject we talked about, everybody mentioned it, can we at least resolve sometime shortly, if we can in fact pass or, uh, use town or successor city as we do that? Would save us redoing it another year or so? I mean, I'd like to have that question resolved, and that would go a long ways to passing some of these ordinances, I think.
I think, I think our, our ability to get turnback money and our being elevated to a city of the second class will probably be able to happen in the same week, because the treasury is one of the, you know, the Secretary of State and the Treasury and the Auditor, I think, are... Auditor, I think, are the ones that have to rule on that. Once they have a number, a population number from the Census Bureau, I don't think they'll have any problem at all elevating us to a city of the second class.
But you said that might not happen.
No, I didn't, I say it won't happen like tomorrow, but.
It's gotta happen.
It's gotta happen. You know, they're, they're working on it. I, you know, I don't know if anybody is willing to give us a timetable on when it will be resolved, but it will eventually be resolved.
It's the eventual.
Well, it could easily be six months. I mean, this is critically important to us, it's almost not important at all to anybody else in the state.
That's true.
And, and right in the middle of a legislative session, if it's going to require, you know, legislative support, then it's going to be, get tougher yet. So, I think that the best thing to do is to have the ordinances all drafted, draft them to Say City, and be ready to vote them all in in one meeting when, once we have money and have a, you know, and have the elevated status from the state.
Yeah. I think we could probably call them city as long, you know, write them that way.
Yeah.
I think with ordinance says, you have to have three ratings.
Yeah.
Right, and they can't take, they can't take effect for 90 days or something.
Unless you attach the emergency clause.
Yeah, which we have.
Do what?
We probably would not need the emergency clause.
It depends on what the ordinance is, but that, that's available.
Uh, but we could, you know, go without it and see where we could, you know, where the timeline, but I think, I think we can move ahead with it and get them ready. I agree with that.
Yeah. Let, let me ask a question about, you know, the, the first three titles in the, in the municipal code. Do you think that we could just pass one ordinance adopting that? Or do you think we should have more specific ordinances referenced in, you know, and then have the municipal league reference those ordinances when they're codified? To me, the shortcut way to do it is to pass one ordinance adopting, you know, our draft of Title 1, 2, and 3.
Isn't that a question for the mun, muni league or a lawyer?
Yeah, the research I did, it says ordinances have to be very specific on one subject, and so I don't know if the subject could be covering a general list.
That's true. And there is going to be, if you, you know, the Fairfield Bay Municipal Code at least, you know, the, I think the very first page says, Ordinance Number Such and Such and Such adopts this municipal code, but then buried in that municipal code is reference to numerous other ordinances.
Yeah, that ordinances was to, to wrap all the ordinances into a muni code, so that, it wasn't all the.
It wasn't passing the ordinance.
Right. And if you look at other municipalities, their muni code, many of them reference under specific ordinance to attach to a specific paragraph, so.
Yeah, and there's even language in there that says that, that there's information in the ordinance that's not in the municipal code, and you should refer to the ordinance when making decisions, so. So that, if we want something to do, and that doesn't cost any money right now, we can start drafting ordinances that would eventually yield something that looks like the draft of the municipal code.
The municipal code itself is not an ordinance, right? Yep, that's what, I mean, it's just, it's just an umbrella of procedures.
It's, it's a way of organizing ordinances.
Right.
Is the way I understand it. Lawrence, you're the, kind of the.
Did you see me fidgeting? If you would like opinions from me at all, I'd be happy to speak.
I think we would.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yeah, actually, it is pretty easy, and going back to some things we've said, when you're drafting the ordinances, you know, even though they say town at the top, town of Halle Island, what goes in the municipal code itself, the codification and everything below it, so the, the important thing is to set your, your chapters and your sections and reserve those, you know, so if you have a format that you want to go into, like if you look at the HICID code regulations, it changes, the citations change throughout the document, it makes it very confusing. So once you establish, you know, whatever kind of citations that you want, your, you know, chapters, sections, subsections, paragraphs, and, you know, whether parentheses A, and then a big one, and then a big A, or whatever the system is, so you might want to do something establishing your codification system, and that would just go with whatever most of the cities use. But like Mr. Mills said, the codification is not the, is not the ordinance, you know, you'll have a file of the ordinances, but when the time comes and you become the city of Halle Island, you can adopt all those previous laws with just one non-code regulation or one non-code ordinance, and it's very simple. You could actually take a sample and, and adopt them all at one time, and so, because the city or the town will never show up in your codification, and you'll just keep those on file, that one ordinance adopting all the previous ordinances, and so I think whatever work you do now is not going to be forgotten, it, because when the time comes, it will be very, very easy to catch up. Because I would be surprised if the municipal league doesn't even have a, a draft set of ordinances that you can actually adopt right now, if they reach your needs.
They do, haven't one. If you look at the, at the municipal codes for the similar sized towns in, around Arkansas, they all follow very similar format, it's, it's basic language from the municipal league.
When, when I helped cities in Alaska set up with their initial codes, what they can do is they can take a chapter, just make sure that everything in that chapter is relevant to the city, you know, because a lot of your permit codes, all those are dictated by state statutes, so. I, I think it'll be very easy, uh, once you get to that. Did I get all the questions, or any other questions?
Resolutions can't go directly into the code, right?
No, no, resolutions cannot go into code. You can have resolutions, but, and I can show you, you should have a resolution disposition list, an ordinance disposition list, and we do that for.
I think I should have resolutions, if I remember.
Yeah, but the, the.
There's one, supposed to be one time, directions or.
Yeah, they're basically establishing an opinion of this body that could change if , whenever you have a new election, the resolutions could be.
I, I remember when I was on, first on the board, the regulations and resolutions were not codified, and they were intermixed, and sometimes they were regulations, and sometimes they're resolutions, or, yeah, they were, it was a heck of a mess.
The, the HICID code of regulations is very disorganized, when it comes to, over time, things changing, it's not like the very first 36 regulations that were passed, they're forever known as, as Regulation Number 7 for, I think, amenity fees or something like that, and we always go back and reference those originally. But, so I think the most important thing is figure out what your codification is, and when you establish these new ordinances, you get to say exactly where you want that to fit into your, your municipal name.
That's one way of doing it. The way the municipal league, the way the lady down there described it to me is, is that most towns or cities, especially new ones, or even old ones that had never codified anything, they'll just show up down at the municipal league with a cardboard box full of ordinances and say, we want this codified, and they decide what title each particular ordinance fits under, and.
Right.
They, they create the sub-chapters and all of that kind of stuff.
Well, that's, that's a great service if you provide that.
For a fee. I mean, they don't, they don't do it for nothing.
And that's kind of like with muni code, we have to tell them exactly where the, what chapter, if you chose the regulations to use, it's always amending, chapter, whatever, section, whatever, and, and it has all the citations in there, so they know exactly where to plug it in.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, that was.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah.
Where, where do we stand on the municipal league finding out what it will take for us to join, how much?
I, I got a call yesterday from, or maybe it was an email, it was an email, from a lady down there, and I've talked to her before, she wanted to know what our population was.
So did, so did Lanny, I said, I wish we knew that.
Fortunately, they don't care if it comes from the Census Bureau or what, so I sent her the, the information directly from, that we got from GIS with our population estimate of 2,260, and, and the spreadsheet that went along with it to determine how they came up with that, I am 100% sure that that's going to be a good enough number for them because your dues are based on population. She was surprised that we're as large as what we are, so, and then she also wanted me to fill out a, a form that had all of our contact information and everything else in it for the, for the directory that they put out, and I asked her if we could have a little time, because I said, right now, we don't have city email addresses and city phone numbers and everything, and I would just assume not put everybody's personal information in the state directory at this time. She said that would be fine, she's going to find out what their printing deadline is, so, but.
I think we can probably work on that in the next week or two, don't you?
Yes, yes, the sooner the better. In fact, I was going to talk to you about it this afternoon.
We've got enough funds to go ahead with the.
We have enough to do that.
Yeah.
Well, we talked about passing the hat for some things, and I, I think we need to do that. I mean, I'm willing to kick in.
Yeah, I agree.
And then another question, at every meeting, including today, that, you know, we need to run this past an attorney. Is there, I, I mentioned the lady that volunteered, I don't know if you've talked to her, but there's got to be an attorney here that would be willing to kind of just do some pro bono work to get us going.
As far as reviewing ordinances?
Yeah, just, you know, any question that we have, because we're, I don't know, just a thought, if we had somebody that we could just run some things past until.
I know one that might, I don't, she doesn't specialize in city work, but she might be willing to help us.
That Jerry's neighbor?
Yeah, Jerry's neighbor.
Yeah, she, she volunteered, I mean, you might call her and see.
I forgot that, yeah.
And.
Is she licensed in Arkansas?
I have no idea.
Oh, that might be important. They're so specialized, I'm a little nervous about asking for legal advice from somebody that does like, you know, tort law, I mean, that.
She was a, she's a retired professor at the University of Arkansas.
Oh, then she probably has an Arkansas.
I would think she does, I, I haven't specifically asked her that.
Doesn't she specialize in real estate?
That I don't know.
I think she might, I can't remember.
That's the only requirement that I've seen, is that it, you know, they would have to be licensed in the state of Arkansas.
I don't know, you may, you may call her, she, I told her you were going to probably call her.
I, I hadn't yet because, because the municipal league offered to jump in and help us on this particular situation, so.
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, that's the prudent thing to do there, but on some of the, just these little questions, I, I mean, I, I would think she would even be willing to come and sit in the meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I just throw that out there, that that's something we desperately need.
I don't, I don't think we want to try and get Justin to do pro bono, I think that probably might be.
I think we'd have to pay him.
I think it would be a conflict, probably, you know, but.
But if he's willing to work for a dollar an hour, that would be okay.
Well, you know, a lot of attorneys. The problem is, you know, he, he put Holly up to do that for free, but, and then she left the firm, so they have made, I could, you know, ask him, but I, since we've got an RFQ out, I'm kind of hesitant to do that.
Well, I would think if we called Jan and, and see, I mean, just to have somebody that would say, hmm, maybe you shouldn't do that, or whatever.
I would, I don't think I'd have told that.
I will definitely call her. I, I think we'll get some support from that, you know, in that respect, from the municipal league, because, you know, there's, I, I'm quite sure that once we get into the planning and zoning thing, that there's going to be lawyers involved.
Oh, but I mean, we can do an awful lot of preliminary work before.
Well, you know, I think, you know, to Lawrence's point, I, I think, you know, if we start with Title 1, and, you know, the first three titles are pretty, you know, I don't know what the right term is, innocuous, you know, low risk.
Basic.
Yeah, basic stuff, and.
Well, they're also pretty uniform with all.
If we can, if we can start out with those first three chapters and develop the actual ordinances that would be required to, you know, to end up with, with that kind of.
Well, I think right now, we've got resolutions, so, you know, so the, most of the wording's already there, and all you do is change the way you present it.
Yeah.
More formal.
And, and while we're discussing that, you know, I came up with a numbering convention for resolutions, and nobody objected or suggested anything other, or said it didn't look official enough. Ordnances, instead of starting out with resolution, 2021-001, ordinances would start out with ordinance, 2021-001, I don't see any reason to make it any more complicated than that, so. And I have been keeping a spreadsheet of that, but technically, Wes, probably you should be the keeper of the index of ordinance numbers and issue.
I've got a file that I'm keeping them in right now, but I haven't made an official index.
Yeah, you probably need to, and any, anybody that's drafting an ordinance would come to you for the number for that ordinance, that way we have one official source for issuing ordinance numbers and resolution numbers, because it's not, you know, I've done it so far, but it's not really necessarily the mayor's job to draft all of the ordinances and resolutions, you know.
What do you think we're paying you for? Now he's going to want an.
Technically, I think it says that the ordinances are, are proposed by council members.
Right.
With your ordinances, wouldn't they kind of go by title?
Yes. Well, you know, that's the, I think that some ordinances neatly fit under a particular title and chapter and everything, but I also think that there's maybe a possibility that one ordinance would be, would be referenced in multiple titles and chapters.
Could be, but then you'd have to, it would seem to me, the way that you normally do that, it would be, it would come on. that, it would be, it would come under some particular title, like Title Four, Chapter, whatever, and then if, if it was also referenced in some other, uh, uh, chapter or title number, then it would, you'd have the, the reference back to that, and you'd have to go back, it wouldn't be repeated in the second or third place, but it would be referenced, but that also applies.
I, I'm not quite sure how that, I don't know that, you know, I haven't read that many sample ordinances. I don't, but the couple that I have read, I don't remember them referencing a, um, a title or a chapter, um, in the municipal code.
But they, they, I would think that would be a way to do them in the title, you know, it's, it's creating, uh, a particular title and chapter, or amending a particular title and chapter, or whatever.
Mm-hmm. Then if you want to look something up, at least you know where to begin.
Well, and where, where that's going to get codified and all.
Mm-hmm. The, the, the only, I guess maybe the only issue I have with that is that if the ordinance references the title and chapter, then that almost makes the municipal code the, you know, the higher level document.
Hmm. It's just a, it's just a collecting...
You know, the, let, let's say I wrote an ordinance that said, um, "We're going to change Title One, Chapter Two, Subchapter, you know, 2.3," you know? That, that implies that, that that's the legal document. The title, chapter, subchapter is the legal document, and we're writing an ordinance to amend it. And the municipal code is not the legal document.
Really?
Yeah.
No, it's just a summary or whatever you want to talk about.
It's, it's a way of, the, the municipal code, as the municipal league explained it to me, is just a way of organizing your ordinances.
Okay.
So, um, so I'm not quite sure. I think you need to have an idea in mind when you're sitting down to write an ordinance. Are you, are you writing an ordinance that's going to impact health and sanitation, or, you know, um, fowls and animals and, or, you know, what? You, I think you want to have an idea of what title it's going to fall under, but I don't know that I would reference that title in the ordinance.
Really?
Theoretically, theoretically, all the ordinances come first, and then you codify them. You don't write, you don't, we're doing it backwards because we're, you know, we're starting from scratch. We're kind of starting with the outline. We're using the municipal code as the municipal league has developed it for other people as our outline for where do we need, where, where do we, where should we be looking, you know, to see where we might need an ordinance? But we're not going to, we're not necessarily, we, we shouldn't primarily be writing ordinances that support an already existing municipal code.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that, that you need that connection, because if you're trying to understand the laws of the city, you're going to go to the municipal code to read it, to understand it. But an ordinance, you should cross-reference it both ways. You know, the, in the title, you can say it's, it, these ordinances had an effect on this chapter. In the ordinances, you point to the chapters that it's dealing with.
Yeah, and I, I guess I don't see the harm in that, but I think...
I'm thinking, I guess I'm thinking, say, the way state law is organized, are we talking about something similar to that or something different? That, say, if you want to look something up about suburban improvement districts, there's a chapter or whatever for suburban improvement districts, and you go to that, and everything is under that.
Yeah, I didn't, you don't look at all the acts that were passed.
Right.
Well, you look at the, you know, it...
In the same way with the High-Sid, they, we pass, High-Sid passes regulations that affect the code. But if you want to see all the code by chapter, you know, and here's all the administrative stuff, here's all the public work stuff...
But if you, if you, if you...
You don't have to read every regulation.
Um...
But there's references both ways. The regulations refer to the title and chapter and what you're changing in the title and chapter, and then when you read the title and chapters, I think at the bottom of the paragraph, they sometimes point back to the regulations maybe?
Yeah.
All I can do is say how I do it and how I've seen it done. In the title of the ordinance, there would be an ordinance, um, enacting, uh, leash law, amending section, whatever, then all that we have in the codes, and then you actually write it in with all the citations actually on the side. It appears in the body of the ordinance exactly the way it will go into your, your municipal code.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But I, I think it works both ways. It still has its own law, which is you're dictating where it's going to go in here. And I, I was trying to pull one up on, from another town and see what their sample ordinances look like, and I feel like by now I'll let you know. Because I'm pretty sure that when we amend a code ordinance, if you have code ordinances and non-codes, non-codes are no, um, current nature, kind of like if you adopt your budget using the limits, that will be a non-code ordinance.
Yeah, it's a temp, more temporary thing.
Exactly. But then the other ones are meant to be codifying the municipal code.
But to me, if you're, if you go to and look at the code to find something out about the city, especially if you're doing research, it would be nice to know what happened that caused that to be passed, so you don't, you can tie it to a date and time.
And in the municipal code, they routinely reference what, um, what ordinance number, you know, generated that part of the municipal code.
Yeah.
So that, that connection is there, you know, where it says, "This is, this is the nuts and bolts of it, this is the basics, but if you want to read the full context of the ordinance, here it is."
So, when you're codifying it, how does someone make sense of all the ordinances unless you point to the chapter and title and chapter? To ensure that it goes to the right spot?
That's what we, that's what, um, the municipal league does for everybody. They look at your ordinance and they say, "That belongs in Title Two, you know, Subchapter, whatever."
I have an ordinance written, if you want me to read the title for you.
Yeah.
Um, it's, uh, ordinance, uh, six-three-three-two, amend section 178.02 sidewalk cafes. An ordinance to amend section 178.02 sidewalk cafes, remove certain permit requirements during the period of COVID-19 pandemic, to technically authorize the use of public parking spaces as sidewalk cafes by adjacent businesses upon payment of your appropriate fees, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Davidville, Arkansas, and then they have, the section, uh, 178.02 is hereby amended, and then it goes into the codification, the D, parentheses, one, parentheses, small a, small d, small c, with all the pertinent stuff in there.
So they, they're rewriting it in the ordinance itself.
Probably showing the strikeouts and the additions.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Exactly.
All underlined and insertions and strikeouts are, are removed.
And that's the way the acts are written for the state, too.
Exactly the way the Arkansas state is with, and Oklahoma and everybody else.
Not, I guess I'm not totally sure if it's the same thing.
We don't have to agree on the formatting today.
See, I even, I even remember reading somewhere that the municipal code isn't necessarily word-for-word what was in the ordinance. In fact, that's their cautionary statement, that the, um, the, um, the municipal code is not the, um, is not word-for-word from the ordinance, and consequently, you should refer to the ordinance, you know, when, when making a decision about something.
Well, then what use is the municipal code? If it's not something that's counted past?
It's just easier to read.
It's a starting point. It's the difference between looking for something that impacts chickens in Fairfield Bay and looking for something that affects chickens in Cherokee Village. Cherokee Village has not codified any of their ordinances. They have an index on their website by year, and the only way you can find if there's an ordinance about chickens is by going, opening up every single one of those ordinances going back to 1998 to see if there's one in there about chickens, and, uh...
Well, then, yeah, they're not dependent on the municipal code then.
Right. They've never codified it, not that I, not that they have on their website anyway, so...
Dan, to that point in that document that you worked on by changing some names, on page three, it says, "Such code," it, back up, "the code of ordinances is hereby adopted and enacted as the code. Such code should be treated and considered as new and original comprehensive ordinance which shall supersede all other general and permanent ordinances passed by the city on and before." So that language says the code is the, is the gospel.
Hmm, interesting.
So, that's a little bit different than what we've been talking about, having the ordinances being the gospel and the code being a summary. That's, that statement says that the code is the gospel.
What, which section is that in?
It's on page three of that four, 27-page document we're shooting.
I don't have page numbers, but...
Okay, it's right under...
This one. Careful.
Okay, too much?
I never saw him dance before. I don't want to see it again without using the face.
Where'd it say?
I don't know.
It was on page two.
The ordinance is here.
Here. Shall be treated, considered, commented, passed by...
Yeah, okay, great. Such code shall be considered a comprehensive ordinance.
Right, and it needs the code as this document that you're reading.
Yeah, exactly.
It names it as the gospel.
I'm reading in the municipal league pamphlet here.
Okay.
But I, I guess if you do that, you'd have to codify everything that you pass.
Well, it makes sense from what the example that we found from Fayetteville. They're saying, "Here's an ordinance that modifies the code."
Yeah.
We're making the code the gospel.
I don't see one way or another in here.
But some cities may not do that because they don't want to pay for it.
Well, I think you, I think Dan said Cherokee Village never did codify their ordinances.
Yeah, well...
But then it makes it harder to...
Well, it sounds like the way they're doing it would be really time-consuming to go through and make sure you've got the latest provision. It'd be very difficult.
That's why, when, when I was on the BOC, we had the stuff codified, because you couldn't figure out where you, what you were looking at.
The, I, I think, I think it's still an accurate statement to say that the ordinance is the only legal document. They just made their municipal code a legal document by making it an ordinance. They passed an ordinance adopting the municipal code as their legal document, so it's still, you know, the ordinance is still...
Still, if you went back to it and you were in court of law, you would go to the ordinance thing, is what you're saying? Is it, because that's, that's the basis of changing the code.
However, if they wouldn't have passed an ordinance establishing the municipal code as their legal document, then it would have just been reference material, and they would have had to go back to the actual ordinance to see how the law was stated.
Sure.
I've just been advised we may have another volunteer to help us legally.
Oh. You may need that.
All attendances have been in the business?
I, um...
Yep, last I saw, they were.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor? Have, I don't know, is it, you know, I mean, we get, keep getting, you know, we're trying to put stuff out and make references, et cetera, uh, to addresses, telephone numbers, et cetera. Uh, are, I, I'm wondering, are we in a position that we could go ahead and, uh, get the website, I mean, get the, um, internet connection and email set up? So, because the telephone comes over internet, right, all this?
Yeah, I think we can get that set up fairly quickly.
Could we not, we have enough funds, we could do that, so we'd have some solid references, or, but to set up the email, we got to have a PC, right?
Well, you could get the email on your own PC.
Okay, I, I, I think we, I would like to see us move ahead and see if we can get telephone numbers and the, and those...
Yeah, Linda and I agreed earlier, you know, about a half hour ago, that we were going to get to work on that.
And I just found another phone vendor that highly recommended, I, I won't name it here, but, um, they don't require an annual contract, but it's about the same price as we were discussing.
But I, I, I think it would be advantageous to us if we had that kind of information, you know, legal, uh, telephone numbers, email addresses, and that. I think it would be a lot easier.
I think that's important, that we establish our contact information with that set of quid.
I, I would like, you were, you know, you had all the background information, can, can you look at that and go ahead and do that and see, and give us prices?
I think we can, uh...
And if we haven't got enough money, we'll pass the hat.
Dan, you should be able to approve a phone, a phone, uh, contract, shouldn't you, without any going through the council?
Well, put it in your pocket then, baby. He's got the only hat here. Um, I don't know, we, you know, we keep...
I think state law gives you enough to come up with that.
We keep coming up with stuff we want to do, and we can't give absolute information out because we're going to change it.
Exactly.
For some of that, it would seem like to set that up or to get our internet service, and we're going to be getting a monthly bill, right?
Yeah.
And our funds are limited right now.
They are, but, uh, we've got enough in the bank, I think, to cover that, this stuff.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking... I mean, we're talking, we're talking relatively small amounts of money and, and I think it...
But if we needed to cut the contract, I'm saying we, we don't, we don't have to lock ourselves into an annual contract on the phone, so...
So, I, I would, I would like to see us go ahead. You know, I mean, we've discussed it. You guys have got the authority to go ahead and do it. I think we need to proceed.
Oh, you know, the only bad part, but I just, it just occurred to me, COCs may require an annual contract for the internet. Or do they? Does anybody, does COCs have an annual contract for internet? You can, we can check in the bank.
I think we're just treading water here.
My machine just disconnected, just so you know.
Oh, really? I don't see, everyone else is still on?
May not, I know. For our service, we agreed to some sort of annual contract to get, take advantage of promotions. Because to get the promotion, you gotta agree to one-year service or something.
Hey, I still don't see, I still don't see a problem. And I think it would, you know, give you real data, you, when you're talking to people that you can give them.
Well, it's not been a hindrance yet, other than the directory and all that.
Well, but I think the sooner we get it, get it out there and get it functioning.
I agree.
Because right now, we're all using our personal emails and that's gonna be a problem someday, you know? Remember how much trouble Hillary got in for in that?
No polit tapes on a local level.
Right.
Getting back to ordinance generation, um, I'm willing for, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm open to suggestions about what we should do as a next step.
Do we need to go through your document you sent out?
No.
And work on it and make sure we get it readied?
I think not. This, this is a work session. We can't pass anything, so...
Right. No, I don't mean pass it. I mean discuss it so that we can...
I read it. I didn't see any problem with it. I read it again and we, I think we could proceed with what you, what you started with. And if, if that's our, we can, uh, we all have a copy of it. We can read it and be ready to, at the next, our next meeting would be third Tuesday of February and we could, we got three weeks to hash it around.
Evening of the 16th, maybe?
Are we talking about the document called Holiday Island Municipal Code?
Yes.
The Word document? Well, that's a, that's not ordinances. That's a list of what the code might look like. Is that correct?
Well, there's a, there's an ordinance at the beginning of that.
He, he actually gave it.
We're coming, we're coming full circle now.
Right.
My first question when I got here was, would we write one ordinance to adopt the first three chapters of the, uh, or the first three titles of the municipal code?
I think for clarity, I think I would do...
Or would we?
I think I would do one for each chapter. Isn't that what we're saying? That we want? I thought, I thought that's where we got to. If you're gonna cross-reference the ordinance back to the code, then you, I would think you'd have to have an ordinance for each chapter.
I mean, these first three, the titles one, two, and three, we've, we've done by resolution. I mean, what, do we need to codify them? I mean, pass ordinances or just?
I think we, we did, we did the resol, you know, we, you got three separate resolutions. So I think you need to write an ordinance for each, each of those when you can convert them from a resolution to an ordinance.
I think you can do it either way.
Well, we can do it all at once.
I'd do one if we can get away with it.
We do one, why do three? Well, because then you'd have to, if you're gonna cross-reference them to the municipal code, then you're gonna have, you're gonna have to separate them, separate it out. So why, if you gotta separate it out, why not do three? I mean, you can do three as easy as you can do one.
Well, it seems like it's a simple question that needs to be asked of the Municipal League. They should be able to embody.
I think, I think we, regardless of which way we go, I think we can go ahead and proceed with it. My, my simple mind is keep it simple, stupid. If you got, if you got, gonna pass one, one ordinance and you're addressing three different issues...
Well, it's not much extra effort, so it doesn't, you know?
Yeah. I mean, it, it looks like it would be easier to keep track of it.
Three votes instead of one, but what's...
Wes has got to read it all anyway. And we'll all silently pay attention, right?
Let me, let me call the Municipal League and see, and get their advice on it.
I think...
These are way doesn't, you know?
Okay. I think, I think we, my weak opinion on this, I think we'd beat this horse to death.
I agree. You can call the Municipal League. Whatever they suggest is fine with me.
Uh, I think, I don't, I think I'm ready, ready to call it quits for today.
Well, I mean, if anybody had it in mind that this was gonna be easy, I think, you know, it's not gonna be easy.
Well, any consensus building is...
As, as an example, when you look at the Fairfield Bay Municipal Code, they don't say anything in there about the code of conduct that the Municipal League handbook says that one of the first things you need to do to keep yourself squared away every year is to have everybody sign the code of conduct that they're gonna be, behave. Well, I don't see anything in the municipal code for any other city that's got a sign-up sheet for, for the code of conduct. So, is that something that should be in the municipal code or is that a personnel policy or something?
I, I couldn't find, is, online, the Municipal League's recommended municipal code. Is that out there somewhere?
Um, no.
Okay.
No, what, I asked for that several times. I said, I, I don't, we shouldn't have to start from scratch. Um, don't you just have a generic municipal code that you can send me in Word format and we can start editing it? And they said, "No, we don't do it that way. If you want a sample ordinance, we have sample ordinances probably for anything you can imagine. And if you request a sample ordinance, then we'll, we'll send it to you." And, um, and then once you have all of your ordinances, then you put them in a cardboard box and bring them down here and we codify it for you.
See, that's what you just hit upon. See, if they gave you the code, then they wouldn't get caught, charge you for codifying.
Yeah. I think they're, I think they're giving us good advice.
I did find a website, um, that lists a lot of the bigger cities in Arkansas and you can just click on the city name and go directly to their municipal code.
Yeah, Ly, I think, Lynn, didn't you send that out?
I, I think I just sent it to you.
Okay. What, what is the website or do you?
It's, it's a Municipal League front end of it. Let me see if I can find it. I don't think I can on there.
Can I go to Municipal League and start there with a search?
Well, how did I find that? I Googled...
Just Google munico.
Yeah, munico. Because that's in the name of it. That's in the website.
Munico or the Municipal Code?
M U N I C O D E.
Yeah. Arkansas munico.
Well, munico is nationwide, so you have to get to there.
Yeah, that's, when, when I was on the council in Chickasha, that's what, that's our municipal code there is listed and it's searchable. When you're talking about chickens, I called up that Chickasha when, searched for chickens.
What is this thing with chickens?
Well, it's just, I mean, it's, you can, you can just search for chicken and it, we had two ordinances in Chickasha about chickens.
Okay, here's one from Rogers Pine Bluff Bentonville.
Yeah. And you'll see that there aren't nearly 500 cities in Arkansas have used the munico system. They may have somebody else, but they haven't used that system.
A lot of these cities were, I mean, some of them date back to the 1800s, early 1900s when I'm sure Municipal League probably wasn't even around. So they may have been stuck with, you know, old stuff that they've just brought forward themselves.
Well, that's where, that's where the, the story about the cardboard box came from. That it was, it was a town in Arkansas that had been incorporated for, forever. And they decided one time, one day, they wanted to codify their ordinances and they literally brought them to the Municipal League in a cardboard box and said, "Here you are." So, um, yeah, I mean, there was, there was ordinances being drafted long before there were computers with searchable files.
Really? I wouldn't imagine, yeah. We existed before then?
Yeah, most, most of us in here did.
Okay.
All of us did. I'm older now.
What about Jerry?
Oh, you didn't get a, you didn't get a, you didn't get a COVID shot, though.
Not yet. I don't qualify.
Yeah, that is, I got mine and they wouldn't give Chris one because she's only 69.
Yeah, I, I haven't gotten mine yet. I qualify and I'm starting to run out of patience with the, I'm, I am convinced that, we're getting off topic here, but I'm convinced that the pharmacy up here does not have my name on the list. But they won't look if you call them and ask them. But it's been, I've been on the list supposedly for three weeks already.
Well, just, you can call them and register.
Three weeks to get my shot, so.
Call up there and register again.
They don't leave a message when they call. If you're not there and don't answer it, you might go to the...
They sent me an email.
Unless they, if they only have, if they only have one...
I got an email too.
Phone number.
Two.
They have two? Well, then it's possible. Because I don't have any missed calls from the number I have in there.
Just call them and register again, same up there.
You know, maybe I just got lucky because I was over getting a prescription for the wife and I asked them about it and they said, "Oh, what's your email?" And I gave my email address. The next day I got an email that says, "Come and get your shot." So, I'm not, I'm not sure if I was on the list and it came out or...
I'm starting to think that the pharmacist was against incorporation.
I, um, I went through the same thing, Dan, trying to get them to verify my name was on there. And I went up there and kinda jumped up and down and screamed and hollered. I got a call the next day.
Well, I'm a little worried about the second one. I hope the record keeps that, you know?
Did they schedule it?
There's only a window of time where you have to get your second one.
By the time, by the time my name comes up, the Johnson and Johnson one-shot option will be there and, uh, that'd be good for me.
I, I saw, going back to ordinances, I saw on the Municipal League site, they have technical code adoption and implementation procedures. And you can, they have a way that you can adopt all the standard building codes all in one time, very simply, which I think that would be a good thing that we could do.
Yeah, I think the building codes are way down the line.
But, I mean, they have it real easy for you.
I think that, I, my, my, my hope is that once we actually get some sort of working relationship going with the existing planning commission, that they have all that stuff already. And all we had to do was, is write something, write an ordinance to adopt what they have. You know, that, they, I think that they're more, I think that they have more, um, backup stuff than we give them credit for.
I don't know how they could. They would have to write that in every single covenant. They would have to write specific language about building codes.
They have, there, there's a, there's a kind of a catch-all phrase in the covenants that, that says that the, the planning commission or the committee of architecture can draft rules and regulations to do their business. And I think that that allows them to, to adopt, uh, building codes and, and all that kind of stuff.
I have a copy of their, of their regulation that, that states their building code.
Yeah, they, they updated it in August of 20.
Yeah, I've got that.
I think that's when they included fines and that kind of thing. They changed their rates for, uh, the fees they charge.
What about those parcels that are not covered by the covenants?
They don't, you know, that's something that would have to be dealt with differently, but...
That's what he's talking about. You put in health area, what do you call it, health or whatever?
Well, that would be under zoning. You know, well, um, getting a, you know, getting a plan approved for developing unplotted parcels that aren't covered by a covenant, you know, is something that would have to be addressed. But right now, I have no idea if we're talking about 100 acres or no acres.
Well, you, you got that thing up on Rocky Top Circle of seven acres. You got 160 acres laying out there up by the front entrance that's, you know, not in a parcel or not in a, uh, unit.
Not covered by a covenant.
The, um, well, I don't know that they're not covered by a covenant.
Well, if they're specifically excluded, then they say.
There's, there's a, the, um...
And there's six, what, 40 acres up by, behind the fire station.
Yeah, but you don't, you do not know that those parcels don't have a covenant.
No, I do not know.
Right. And until we know, we're just jumping to conclusions.
Well, I think...
Because I read, there's, there's a covenant, there's a covenant on the, on the Hi-Sid website right now. That's for a parcel that before Tom Dees sold that parcel to somebody, he wrote a covenant for that parcel that says that all the same things, it's gotta be R1, you know, and it's got all the things in it that, that other units have. So, there are parcels that have covenants. And there are parcels that are included in unit covenants. And then there are other parcels, I'm sure. One of them I know is that what would be parcel C that's on the north side of Cypress Point and, you know, that, that section over there that, um, that is privately owned and it's 450 acres and it's, to my knowledge, there's no covenant or anything on that. But, you know, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna jump in there and say, "Well, we need to have a big, you know, long-winded ordinance covering, um, development of, you know, of unplotted parcels and then find out, there's only two acres in all of Holiday Island that fits under that."
That would be relatively easy to find out, I would think, so.
Yeah, but until we know, we don't wanna start writing ordinances.
One, one thing we should also bear in mind is that the covenants that are listed on the Hi-Sid web, website were only the covenants that were there 10 years ago and did not include all the units.
Yeah, some were added just recently, but...
Yeah, there are units that have added, and there were units that Hi-Sid did not have the covenant paperwork on at the time we put them on the website.
Yeah. So that's all stuff that we need to... Yeah, so that's all stuff that we need to get up to speed. All right, well, my takeaway for myself from this meeting is I'm gonna call the, the municipal league and ask what their opinion is on us just writing one ordinance to draft to adopt the first three titles of the municipal code. If they think that's a bad idea, then I'll let everybody know and we'll write individual ordinances that will result in that section of code.
This first page back to the title page, is this the ordinance that would adopt all of it that you sent to us?
Well, that's the, that's the ordinance that Fairfield Bay used to adopt the municipal, their, their complete municipal code.
So they did it all with.
I just copied and pasted that, so I, I, it's not there as a, necessarily as something we would have.
I saw this in some other city too, I think, something similarly.
Yeah, we air about a lot. Yeah, I think, I think we've exhausted meeting dialogue.
Yeah, Saffield has a similar ordinance on fronting their municipal code.
That's why I think that for most cities that have been around for a long, long time, the ordinances came first and then they were codified and then they wrote one ordinance accepting the municipal code.
I think that's a good analogy.
But for us, it may be, we may be able to shortcut that somewhat by adopting sections that are already done.
Third Tuesday, right?
Every month, whether you need to or not. Every month, yeah.
Anybody else going to, I should go around the room and say, okay, what are you going to do now as a result of the workshop? Everybody has to have a takeaway.
I'm gonna go get a drink.
I'm gonna look at that statue on, on the, changing the status of what's involved in getting us to a first, second class.
No, we're, we're on the, our regular meeting's on Thursday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday? Not Thursday, okay.
Third Tuesday.
Tuesday night, 6 o'clock.
We'll give Dan an amen for working with the, in his, in the munich league.
Now, you don't need to worry about drafting a resolution, I've already drafted a resolution that when the time comes for the city council or town council at the time to give Wes the authority to apply to the Secretary of State to elevate us.
I've read that, I've read that code several different times, I just haven't read it recently, you know.
It's just that the, you know, the people that we're asking, that we're gonna need to ask to elevate us to a city of the second class are the same people where.
Secretary of State.
They're the same people that won't do anything without a letter from the Census Bureau. So they're not going to take the fact that there was, you know, 2,000 people on the voter registration list as being evidence.
Even though it's obvious to even the uninformed.
So is the workshop over?
Yeah.
You're the boss.
You say?
We're done.